Okay, so we're resuming our regular session. Or are we ready to record yet?
We are recording.
Oh, okay, good. We're resuming a regular session of the Oakwood City Council at 6:55 PM. Okay, a quick question before we move on. Can Colleen, can you confirm, did our mayor join in while we were out? All right then, council, would anyone be interested in making a motion from executive session?
I move to approve the offer from Tower Point to purchase the Verizon lease.
All right, does anyone have any discussion, any more discussions? No? All right, the motion was, I move to approve the offer from Tower Point to purchase the Verizon lease. Jackie, can you call for the vote?
Who's second to the motion?
Who? Counselor Coker.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Coker.
I.
Counselor Brewer.
I.
Counselor Tarman.
Nay.
Counselor Hollitt.
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson.
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon.
Nay.
Okay.
Can you, can you repeat the Kelly?
It was forty-two.
Forty-two, motion passes.
Yeah.
Yes, forty-two, that makes sense. Okay, so we'll move on to business from the city council. Item eleven point one on our agenda is the Sasquatch Duro Race Alcohol Permit for July twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four. James, do you want to introduce this?
Yes, all right, this is pretty simple one, Sasquatch Duro Bike Race, you know, for many years. Like, please organizer.
Excellent. Does anyone have a motion they want to make for this item?
I move to approve the alcohol permit for the Sasquatch Duro Bike Race on July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four.
Second. So the motion was made by Counselor Brewer and seconded by Counselor Hollitt to approve the alcohol permit for the Sasquatch Duro Bike Race on July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four. Does anyone have any discussion?
But I was just here because I saw on the permit it says we are not selling alcohol, so are they giving? Okay, that's the way it always does it, it's part of the package, doesn't it?
That's still selling though, isn't it? Distributing.
If you're in, if you're a racer in the bike racing, you pay as much as you can. The way it's been for ten years. His point is that it's not like not selling for beer. And a lot of our.
So then probably, like, anyone from the public can't just walk in and purchase beer while they're okay. Is there any more discussion? All right, Jackie, could you call for the vote?
Counselor Bjornson.
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt.
Aye.
Counselor Tarman.
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Counselor Coker.
Aye.
Counselor Brewer.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. The next item on our agenda is the draft fee waiver policy. And this is a policy that was worked on by Counselors Hollitt, myself, and Counselor Brewer. Would either of you guys like to introduce this to the council? Um, I have. And here it is in writing.
So as everyone knows, we've had for years now, actually, lots of debate over fee waivers for events, profiting events, non-profiting events, and just good-for-the-community events, and it's always created, I mean, I'm sure before I started, it's always been kind of a divide, so the three of us looked at different policies all over, not just the state, and kind of took one from a couple in particular, and really tried to focus really on the not-for-profit and nonprofit groups, so this policy doesn't exactly address groups like Sasquatch or the Bus Fair or those bigger profiting events. This really is more focused on things like the Dogs of Valor, Boy Scouts, the Warming Center, those types of communities that bring a benefit to the community, so anyhow, that is really what it's based around. Some of the key points in it is also to create a little less minutia that has to come to council, kind of a guideline for our city administrator to be able to approve some of these waivers that if they fall under the certain criteria, they can, it's something that he can take care of and then later come to us with a tally and let us know what has come through, and then that'll also include a financial impact, and then what type of good things have happened in those buildings that we've done fee waivers for. So I don't need to read this, right?
No, absolutely not. I would ask though, Kelly, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I actually, I actually had one small amendment that I came up with today, actually. At the very end, it talks about failure to abide by the rules and procedures as set forth in this document, I wanted to add in about falsifying reports or event details will be an instant disqualification of fee waiver eligibility. And I, this only came up because I was concerned that maybe people could maybe be a little less forthcoming with the details to receive fee waivers, and I wanted to make sure that the people that came to us for the the waivers themselves were being honest and forthcoming with city council and that we were holding people accountable for what they were telling us. There's a lot of these people that come in for these types of events, sometimes they're new to our community and we don't really know how they operate, and so we're taking their words for it, so I really wanted to see about putting in a honesty disclaimer in the the asterisk part about being denied if you don't give the reports or if you're dishonest. So I have the verbiage, we wanted to discuss that part.
So should I make them somebody?
Well, so I was gonna say is we would need a motion and then does it, does it, would anyone like to make a motion?
I think most appropriate to counsel Brewer since she has the background.
Okay. Yeah. I move to approve draft fee waiver policy and direct the city administrator to codify and implement it.
I'll second that.
Okay, that was moved by Counselor Brewer and seconded by Counselor Coker. However, I wanted to just quickly interject that maybe the motion could have been stated to say something like, and add the yes, you know, the, whatever you just read adds.
Amend the motion and.
You certainly could.
I'm saying shouldn't drafts be taken out of there, it's not a draft anymore.
I don't know that that matters because it would become a draft if we, if we vote on it, I mean, it would become final after it's approved, if it gets approved.
Makes sense. Okay, let me see.
Okay.
I move to approve draft fee waiver policy, adding the amendment about falsifying reports and direct the CA, the city administrator to codify and implement it.
That's excellent, so that was moved by Counselor Brewer and seconded by Counselor Coker, and the motion was, I move to approve draft fee waiver policy, adding the amendment about falsifying reports and direct the city administrator to codify and implement it. Will there be any discussion?
Well, I was curious, I saw a few things in the packet asking about if it's appropriate, like, to go to the admin committee first or RTMP, RTMP, TRT committee? And just a second, clarify, and so this is just the city administrator, the ability to make the decision on ones that are nonprofits or
They have to fall under that criteria.
Yeah, exactly, it doesn't, the, anybody else who's for-profit has to still go through the same process.
Yeah.
Because I had some people contacting me today.
Me too, I explained.
I did too, I was like, I think this is how I'm reading it, I think you're understanding it wrong, but I'll ask the question.
And to point out, there is an asterisk right there that says all fee waiver requests that do not meet the criteria, they still come to us.
I meant, I read them that. Pretty sure that.
We probably talked to the same person.
Probably.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that was one of my concerns, it was when I first went with this, I was like, well, there's no way to reveal, but there is, because of that asterisk, we just discussed, because it would be me, the city administrator saying, you know, criteria
Yeah.
They could then cancel directly, which would, in essence, be.
Exactly. So, like I said, Bus Fair, Sasquatch, any of those other groups that are coming for those fee waivers that are profiting businesses or, you know, which we know there's going to be a lot more, they still get the same opportunity, but we can evaluate it a little deeper.
I also wanted to mention for people that maybe were confused as well, it also limits some of our long-term requests to make sure that all these organizations are going through fundraising and doing everything we can to make sure that they can take care of their their community events themselves first and foremost, and so it really takes the city off the hook for these really big hits of fee waivers that, you know, as much as we'd love to give them, we're a, we're a town that needs income and excuse me again, revenue, and so I think that one of the things that we tried to emphasize is that we're here for the community, but we also have to have limits because we have a community to run, and so I think that the collaboration and also using these other ones that we found online from other cities really gave us great guidelines for what other cities were doing and limits they were setting.
Counselor Tarman.
I, I'm tying into that, I was kind of curious because it says applicants are eligible for up to three fee waivers per fiscal year. How's that, is that like, so say, they're asking for a fee waiver for the weekend, that's one, or is it per day, I was thinking of things like the warming center, you know, how they have maybe this, you know, they have, it's not specified days, or is that just one?
I think their request is, is a, is an open request from this date to this date.
Okay. But this isn't retroactive, correct? No.
No, 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 no.
I, I was just using that as an example, you know, somebody who comes and says, I might want to use it for somewhere in this period. Is that, is that one? Or is that?
Well, there's a dollar amount too.
Yeah.
I think we were basically saying like, per day, like, one day is one rental, two days, so it'd be three total days per fiscal year that were, the CA wasn't able to to push through if they met the criteria in organization, and then anything else would have to come, but even if for instance, the, the Warming Center came to council to request, you know, however many days that fell into winter, they would be capped at the fifteen hundred dollar value.
Yeah.
Which is like, at this point, I think it was like eighteen point seven five days would be the maximum, is that?
Yeah, I understand, what you're saying, answered to your question, Counselor Tarman, the way it's written now, an organization could put in one fee waiver request for four days of rentals of the community building, and that would still be on your fifteen hundred, that would be one request.
That's how I was interpreting it, actually.
Okay, I was thinking more like, Kelly, yeah, I was looking at it as three days, yeah.
Because no one really ever comes to us and says, fills out an application for day one of my event, I want a fee waiver, and day two of my event, I want a fee waiver, and day three of my event, I want a fee waiver. It's an event that spans over this many days, and I'm asking for a fee waiver. So, so that's why I'm saying I interpreted our discussions on per event.
Yeah.
And, and sometimes people have more than one event, like.
Yeah. Until they have one event that's multiple days.
Yeah, they're still fifty, I don't know.
Yeah, there's still the fifteen hundred dollars on it, which I think kind of covers all.
I'd say, I'm with Dawn on it, event, day, day, day.
Yeah.
Because then you would hit the potential fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
That would cover the the going beyond.
Yeah, and that's the way it's written right now, correct? So we wouldn't need to add the day word?
I don't think so. James, you look confused, what do you think? Oh. Okay, is there any more discussion?
I just wanted to mention I put out those suggestions, a couple of suggestions, just for council consideration, I, I don't feel strongly on the other, I, I like the idea of me taking this over so that it's not political anymore. That being said, you know, I will be the CA forever, I might be. I will be here long term, but who knows? That's why I suggested maybe having our TNP, TRT committee make a decision rather than the CA, just wanted to point that out, that is an option for council. That being said, the RT and the TRT committee currently has
Yeah, and we went for a year and a half with three counselors because nobody wanted to be on that committee, so I am pretty hard against that, also, RTMP and TRT, there's such a learning curve on how those funds are supposed to be distributed, so I just I feel like the CA or council are really going to be the ones that understand where that money is supposed to go, and also most of these are going to be for the Green Waters Building, which has nothing to do with TRT or RTMP, the amphitheater could potentially, but that could go either way, but a lot of these funds wouldn't come from RTMP, so I would rather it be simplified, and since the criteria is so minimal that you be able to make, or the CA be able to make the decisions and expedite it, but open to hear others.
I agree, I think that their guidelines for events and organizations makes it pretty cut and dry with you making, or any CA for that matter, not that we're looking to get rid of you.
Yes.
And I think the clause about falsifying information that could go almost at the very bottom, where it says failure to abide by the rules and procedures set forth, you could say, or falsifying information could fit, tie right into that will result in the organization being denied for future funding, because it's already worded there, just add in the falsification of information.
Okay, are we ready for a vote? Do we have any other discussion? Counselor Bjornson online, did you have anything you wanted to contribute or inquire on?
No, I have nothing to add, I really like this policy and I think it'll streamline things a lot for council.
Thank you. All right, Jackie, could you call for the vote?
Counselor Brewer.
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson.
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt.
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Counselor Coker.
Aye.
Counselor Tarman.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Okay, the next item on our agenda is to discuss, item number eleven point three, to discuss the potential of canceling our December twenty-first city council meeting. James, would you like to open the discussion?
Yeah, I have no objections to that. Long as let's plan on a heavier meeting for the first meeting in December and first meeting in January. We won't, it won't work, I think it's good to be, but otherwise it's not going to be, not preventing us from canceling.
I made the request, it's just I've seen it done both ways each year, and I just know that we're all, that's just a busy season, holidays, so.
Certainly is, I agree with that, but I wanted to just inquire, you already know you have enough stuff that you could fill an agenda for that date if we kept it and or moved it to a different date?
I can definitely.
Fill the agenda.
Yeah. But instead, I'm just going to, I think, everything ready for the first one in December. There's nothing time pressing, that one, if there is, I'll probably. I think it is feasible, it's what I'm trying to.
The other reason is staff have plans, you know, they want to go and do things that everybody else does, and it's a lot of work on staff to prep for these meetings, so my thought was it gives everybody a little break at meeting.
Is there any counselors that object to the idea of canceling that meeting? Sounds like no. I think we should probably just plan on canceling that meeting. And please don't hesitate to call for an emergency meeting if something comes up that's that you're not, you know, able to squeeze onto the December one, or that can't wait until January.
And this is a point where I think you may get motion.
Oh, yeah. Okay, my apologies, I didn't.
I move that we cancel the regular scheduled city council meeting for December twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
I second that. All right, moved by Counselor Hollitt and seconded by Counselor Brewer to cancel the December twenty-first, first city council meeting. Is there any more discussion? Jackie, could you call for the vote?
Counselor Hollitt.
Aye.
Counselor Tarman.
Aye.
Counselor Coker.
Aye.
Counselor Brewer.
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson.
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Okay, the next item is number eleven point four. We are Sharp's fee waiver request for the Greenwater Park Community Building for eleven twenty-two, twenty-three.
I would just say that after council's motion on eleven point two, this agenda is probably moved at this point.
I would agree. Policies don't need to wait till they're implemented for thirty days, so I would, I would say we kick this one to the CA.
And because it's so close to the time, or I will just tell everyone publicly, I will be approving that since that's next week, so it's approved if you're on my team.
Excellent, so that means that, just so the public is aware that our local organization ran by Noreen, AKA Tink, to provide a meal for the houseless for Thanksgiving, and we are, James is approving a fee waiver request so she can hold that meal preparation and dinner at the Green Marsh Park Community Building.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so moving on, the next item is business from the city administrator. James, do you want to introduce item twelve point one?
Yes, all right, so I have drafted the letter and then re-drafted thanks to Counselor Brewer, the motion guy, the public nonsense, it's in there, I know. The letter's drafted to the governor and our state representative and league board of cities urging them to take immediate legislative action to protect recreational immunity. Just in a nutshell, recreational immunity is standard in this state for decades, but the Department of Appeals recently made a decision in a case on Coastal City, there was a lady walking her dog with a friend to the beach. That path was owned by the city, she had tripped and fallen, injured herself, and normally recreational immunity at, as soon as the lawsuit is filed, something judgment is thrown out because someone's using a path to recreate for me, and drive. The plaintiff argued that she wasn't recreating yet, she was going to recreate on the beach, but to walk to the beach, to walk her dog on the beach, wasn't recreating. And I know logic is somewhat hard to follow. The court said, well, it's possible that that's true, that she wasn't recreating yet, she was recreating on the beach, therefore the city's potentially liable, and recreational immunity may not apply, and that should be a decision for a court and jury to make, as to what it's intended was. So obviously, that is due for any city that has any paths or trails out by trails, which we got hundreds of miles.
Five hundred miles.
So CIS, our insurance company, has recommended that we potentially close all the trails and monitor them, make sure nobody goes on them with our four police officers. Or have someone stand guard twenty-four seven. Waiver, says if you would like to walk on our path, you need to sign this waiver that says you are recreating.
And that you won't hold us liable if you become injured.
Pretty ridiculous. The appeal, the ordinance, report, they said not to take it up, which means the court appeals decision stands. So the only way to get around this is to have legislation take the right action, put right into law. Which is what we need to do, obviously. Obviously. With one of many cities that is concerned about this and will just add a kind of voice to the voice. And I have no plans to close all of our paths and trails. And so recreational communities technically still still exist, but. The way it used to be, in the case we just thrown out based on that some judgment right at the beginning. Now, if we get sued, it's gonna have to go to trial. It will be up to the jury. I am confident. Juries are pretty reasonable and. Recreational immunity would be. Appellable applied, but we could still have to pay.
Thank you, James. Uh council, do uh is anyone interested in making a motion?
I move to approve the letter to the state legislator and the league of Oregon cities urging that they take legislative action to protect recreational immunity.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Brewer and seconded by Counselor Tarmen. Um is there any discussion on this item? I'd actually like to make a comment. Um James, reading the letter and the article was um. Well, I'll start with the article was shocking. To me, um that we even have to be going down this road. But reading the letter that um. You and Mayor Ketchin put together, I'm just really appreciative of. The work that you put into this and I think that it definitely speaks for how I feel and probably. Many, many, many tourists and citizens in our area. I hope the council agrees. Um. So there's no more discussion on the matter? Jackie, could you call for the vote?
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
Counselor Bjornson.
Hi.
Counselor Tarmen.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Hollit.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Motion passes. Excellent, uh the next item is. Twelve point two transit. Uh transient lodging tax on short-term rentals. James, would you like to introduce this?
City has the ability to tag the short-term rentals such as Airbnb, et cetera, something we have not been doing. Most cities are now doing this. They were proposing a six percent tax. What most cities are doing roughly. Need research be be done. Um so I know normally we would run something down unless we had something to actually pass like the ordinance. This ordinance is gonna take quite a bit of work. Going together. So I would like direction from council whether or not we would like to take, do that or not, so. What I'm asking for is a decision by council, you could compare it to like that, whether he wants to uh. To draft that ordinance to impose, to start to impose uh a action of the effect of the six percent. Tax on short-term rentals. I guess you don't have to decide exactly, but. It's kind of like direction, like to do that, calling this down. Much research, explaining how it works, how we collected, how much we we. Uh would have received last year had we had this, had the estimates in the additional information we put out. Last night.
Okay, council, is anyone interested in making a motion on this topic?
I move to direct the CA to draft an ordinance to impose tax on short-term rentals for council's future consideration.
Motion made by Counselor Brewer and second seconded. That's a tougher yeah, seconded. Um by Counselor Tarmen. To uh direct the CA to draft an ordinance to impose the tax on short-term rentals for the council's future consideration. Do we have any discussion on this topic? Um I would too, but actually I do have an item I wanna um. Ask if no one else has any questions is um or actually not ask, but I'd like to make a point. I'm assuming that this would. This would be a city tax that we would impose not only on. Airbnbs, but all motels, hotels, campground, anything that collects. A rental fee for overnight stays. Thank you. Um if no one else has anything, oh.
Would uh would this be uh go towards like the events that have green waters?
Actually, I bet you Colleen has answers.
This is gonna be exactly like our CRT tax. It's since it's given the new tax for us, we have to. So it's gonna be seventy thirty split, right? So seventy percent has to go to promote tourism, thirty percent can be used.
So they just say. Would potentially have the same thirty day clause of if you don't rent more than thirty days in a year, then.
Correct.
Not subject to the tax or.
Right, so it's gonna be your same. Short-term rental.
And as you can see by the thickness of this packet, there's a lot of rules on that.
And uh. Anyone operating Airbnb. Or property. You make over five thousand dollars a year. You also need to rent in business life.
Right, which, so if you're track of dead, uh I I went through brand because it was a company to. Pretty much a software that crawls the internet. So they go off where they find listing Airbnb listings. We currently have fifty. And. In one year, our growth on Airbnb short-term rentals has grown fifty. So it's really, really big thing. So. But that. So. So yeah, so it's 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 really growing.
Um I would only add that the um the tax obviously wouldn't apply to Airbnb's outside of city limits. We wouldn't be able to do that. Um so there would be. Uh we still, I believe in the area, I I kind of dug into. The interwebs to look at how many a few months ago and I came up with. Uh forty-nine that were within city limits, so I'm pleased to know that there was. That I got really close. And that overall in the outlined areas, Westford, High Prairie and all the other. It was um. Want to say seventy-four is what I could find, a a total, so. Twenty-four more than what we had here in the city limits. Um. So those ones wouldn't have to. Pay, but they are already obligated um. Just like all overnight stay places are obligated to um. Pay RTMP tax to the county level and state level. It's not. So this is actually gonna add a third.
Yeah, I was I was just clarifying like we's like green lawyers, we never rented. Stay more than thirty days. In calendar year, so we're not. We don't have to pay TRT taxes for the people who run it, don't have big TRT taxes. I was just curious if though, if there was some of this in caveat.
Right, and that's what I was getting at with the with the business licenses. So with fifty of them in Eugene and I expect Jackie would probably know better. Um I think two of them have bought them this license.
Could you repeat what you said about Eugene? I don't understand that part. You said fifty in Eugene.
Oh, sorry, in the city of Oak Ridge.
Oh, okay.
Fifty of them in the city of Oak Ridge, I think only two of actually forwarded.
That's your question. It's not paying tax. If someone rented. Through Airbnb twenty-nine day. Then probably making more than five dollars per year.
No, my point was if I had an Airbnb, but I only rented it. Throughout a year for five days. Then I would be subject to this tax.
Unless we broke the.
I was just wondering if he's gonna follow some of the same. Rules as. The other taxes that are imposed.
I think what you're getting at is that the um. The event. Aspect versus a business.
Hmm well, no, I know people who, I I have friends who do um, maybe not here. But in other cities, they don't, it's not a constant thing. They just put it out there every once in a while.
Every once in a while.
Um so they're.
You're essentially saying once they go over that threshold, they're in that bracket, but if they.
Yeah.
Under that, then they don't require this tax.
I was, you know, it's the same as the TRT taxes.
Yeah, yeah, I get what you're saying.
I believe it might be set up the same way. Because it is a ordinance through the state.
Yeah.
We can look into it first.
I realize nothing's, nothing's done yet. I was just.
I believe it falls within the same time.
I have some case. Okay, go ahead.
I did attend the meetings with Colleen last year with that company, so I listened. There was two different meetings we did, right? On Zoom and I listened to all their information and it was really informative and this was kind of. Um what I remember was the county came to Colleen and said, hey, you guys aren't collecting TLT and she was like, oh. We're not? And then that kind of sprung into this, right?
Well, I thought that was a little different thing.
Yeah, that's what it was. So it was kind of like there's this missing, you know, chunk that other cities are collecting that we're not. Um so I have a really like kind of think what you were getting at hardship. Even considering taxing the hotels, motels more because they already pay a lot in taxes. However, we don't really, we're not taking care of the Airbnbs and that's kind of right.
Yeah, but I think that's what everybody, I don't think we can explain it.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And it's also passed off to the.
Yeah, so, yeah. So I just, that's just where I'm at. It's difficult, I think, to place more taxes on the hotels and motels here. So there are already TRT, right? I mean, how many taxes do they already have? You could ask one of them online, but I mean, I just um.
It's a lot of percent for the. It's eleven, eleven percent for the county and I think. Three percent for the state or something.
You know, when you.
Yeah.
Well, all of them. All of them, right? Uh it's not a tax at the motel. I mean. They pay, they send it to the state, but the people that pay are the tourists.
Yeah, I understand that, but in the end, the motels have to increase their rate and say, oh, we're not charging seventy dollars a night. We're charging now seventy-five. So when the people are coming through town, they go, oh, if we're gonna pay seventy-five or eighty for a motel. Why don't we just go do something else? I mean, I just, I think. They're at a limit already as having a hotel in Oak Ridge, so I hate to force them to raise their prices. However. I I just, we need to do something about the Airbnb. So I am curious, I guess what I'm getting at. Is there a way for us to figure out what we're going to do about Airbnbs and not. Tax even more to the hotels, motels.
I don't know, and I don't want that, that that's something that we done.
We talked about that actually when Mayor Holston was still here, that was on the table because we really don't have any ordinances in place. For Airbnbs and so at that time, that was kind of a project that kind of got shifted off because of other things, so. Um, yeah, for me, I I just. I just have, I've talked to every motel here in town for the last five years about the taxes, so. Um and I'm sure they've talked to all of us, but that's that's just where I'm, I really.
We do like the ordinance, right?
Yeah.
We would just have to confirm that we can. But. You know, we're talking about. You know, just the math that we did, just basic, you know, the six percent of what we had lost here. We're talking, you know, eighty-five thousand.
But that does include what that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I agree with, there's a lost, I mean. I don't want to put the Airbnbs out of business either, but there we have to, we should be collecting something for that. Because there is not a difference really from what Airbnbs do. I shouldn't say a difference. There's not a huge difference. We're doing a similar business, so. That's just my thoughts.
Did, there was some discussion about Airbnbs and future Airbnbs in Oak Ridge. What was that? Meeting. Housing needs analysis and potential rules changes.
Taxes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Airbnbs, um there was a bunch of stuff discussed, so it's sort of. In the works, but.
Yeah.
That stuff takes a while.
Well, we had, we were working on ordinance even prior to that too, that's what I was talking about, but just kind of.
I would just add that it sounds like what we're talking about doing right now is. An ordinance that would create a tax for the city on all. And so um. I would assume that. Currently. All Airbnbs are required to follow the same laws. And rules about paying the state and the um. And the uh.
Come on in.
The state and the county tax. You know. They're already probably paying that to the state and the county. They're just not. No one is paying a city tax, so this is a matter of. Should we add a city tax or not? And I don't, I personally would feel like. It wouldn't be appropriate for us to say. One kind of business has to pay the tax and not another. I think that the.
And that's not really what I was saying.
Oh.
I was saying we need to get the Airbnbs on board to pay the taxes that the motels and hotels have been paying.
That's exactly what I just said.
Oh, they are.
The the county taxes and everything.
Yeah.
Is that separate in when they, when the county pays us money? Is that separate?
No, it's included.
Maybe I was misinformed.
I would think so, because I know that anybody, I mean, unless. Unless. You know, maybe it's possible that one person could. Bring out a room in their house to their friends and family or, you know, who who knows who and. And kind of screw under the system about paying taxes, but in general, um like he mentioned, if they're using a website. To advertise their. Their rental, their Airbnb, then um like I just rented one recently and it says right on there, you're paying a cleaning fee and. The city tax, or the, yeah, the one I did had a city tax. And um the state and the county, it's all added in your grand totals at the bottom. And the collector of the. Company that collects it, such as the Airbnb organization, they're actually the ones that are submitting it. To the county and the state what they collect. Rather than the homeowner.
Okay.
So we did have a motion on the table and we've had um. Discussion, is there any other discussion? Jackie, could you call for the vote?
Yes. Counselor Hollit.
Nate.
Counselor Tarmen.
Hi.
Counselor Bjornson.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Um. The next item on the agenda is. Any other city business updates, James, do you have any more, anything?
Quick ones.
Yep.
Were worth a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the foundation. It was whacked. Little bit. Helps, and also today, um. Taking some bait where it was supposed to start on the roof of the lab. It didn't go out there, so.
I was wondering.
But if anyone saw the kind of the wagon.
I did leave a few trucks around.
They did, yeah, excellent, okay, so they did start.
I didn't see anyone on the roof, but there was, there was some trucks around it and stuff, I was working on.
Thank you, James. So the next item is ordinances and resolutions, and we actually have item number fourteen point one, a resolution. Number seventeen dash twenty-two-three. Committee meeting expectations. Presented to us from the admin committee. James, would you like to introduce this issue?
Right, on September twentieth, the admin committee, um. Meant and really unanimously to recommend to the council to adopt this resolution. Of this meeting expectations, set expectations on how committee meetings are run. This kind of, they're all. Kind of in for stability and. My understanding was this kind of draft. Few years ago. Definitely go to buy it. But this has been revised in a similar way. Also giving those a little bit more assistance.
I do. And I'll share that if we have a motion.
I move to approve the first reading of the resolution seventeen dash twenty-two.
I'll second that. Okay, the motion was made by Counselor Coker and seconded. By Counselor Brewer. Uh, to approve the first reading of resolution seventeen dash twenty-two-three. Um, and I'll open the floor to discussion. Does anyone have any? Discussion?
Only thing I'd like to add, um, to it is, um, and it's eleven. Um, we shall appear in person when available to help foster a better trust and accountability.
Sorry, you're saying you'd like to add that to this? Counselor Coker, would you like to, um. Revise your motion, or actually, no, you're saying you'd like to make an amendment, a motion for an amendment?
Yes.
Okay, which would take, um.
Second, yeah.
Yep. Does anyone want to second his motion? Um, just for clarification purposes. Counselor Charman, could you read to me again what you wanted to, the amendment to say?
We shall appear in person when available to help foster better trust and accountability.
Uh, that's a lot, right, I'll have you. Give it to me if, if it's needed, so, um, once again, I'll call, is there a second for this amendment? Sounds like the motion fails, sorry. Um, so back to the original motion. On, um. Discussion, if nobody else has any immediately, I, I'd like to make some comments. Counselor, online, did you have anything?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Okay, um, I actually would like to state that I actually don't support this resolution. And the reason for it is because a resolution. Already exists on this very exact topic. And to back up a little bit, I'll point out that I am on the admin committee that. Uh, presented this to council, however, I was actually absent. At the meeting where this was discussed by the rest of the committee. Had I been there, I might have been able to explain to them that we have a resolution on the books already. It's, um, resolution number oh-eight dash twenty-fifteen, it is already posted on our city website, it's called the Code of Conduct. It was adopted on November eleventh, uh, November fifth. Twenty fifteen, and I was a counselor at the time. Um, there was. Um, a motion made that stated that the. Well, no, maybe this is just part of the actual. Uh, content of the code of conduct was that it's for all staff. Counselors and members of boards, commissions and committees. Um. Which i- in a lot more words than what's in this one, while I do appreciate what is in this one, there's. This resolution is. Goes into a lot more detail about the expectations, ethics. And conduct during meetings, it covers, um, a lot of Oregon law and our own. And a preference as to what we expect. Um. Of everyone who's participating, us a volunteer for the community to do. So. Besides the fact that one is already on the books, the other thing I wanted to point out about it is that, um. The one that is on the books, actually, in the motion, it was stated that. That code of conduct will be given to all volunteers, all new staff, all. Every one of us should have received a code of contact to read and sign. Prior to, I mean, a- upon the appointment of our a- appointment to office and or a committee. And so this is kind of like a duplicate, and it also doesn't. Date anywhere in this. Resolution or the agenda item that we would expect anyone to read it and or sign it. So it seems to me like the one that's on the books should take precedence.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Admin committee was very well aware that there is existing code of conduct.
Okay.
Very well, and in code of conduct, everything starts with, I do this, I will do that, I promise to this, I will. This, every. Every sentence starts with we. We will do this, we will do that. So it's. That's why it's not something that individuals would sign, because it's not. And to be put with individuals. Expectations of the committee. So while I, I agree that, um, there's already existing code of conduct. These committee meeting expectations. Do not. Know the code of conduct out the window, or the, or the state constitution out the window. Or the, the other oath. On obligation of people that it's simply. Guidelines.
So I would, I would ask, how, how would it be, um.
How do you hold we accountable versus I?
There is no account to. There's no accountability for when we write a letter to the governor asking. We wouldn't like you to do this. That's our expectation, we would like. We would like to receive the funding and promise for homeless services. Doesn't mean it's actually coming. But that's our expectation. This. In other words, yeah, it's not. It's just expected. So if someone, let's say, wanted to join a committee, they might read this and say, well, how are committees kind of run? Well, it sounds like. The committees, uh. Want to be welcoming and encourage. A public comment. Wanted to be ideas, not be.
Okay.
I don't know, no one's gonna get kicked off the committee. Cause they're not nice, like the expectation say.
Okay. I'm just curious as to why, um, this needs to be a specific resolution, because it sounds like. It can just be like a poster they put on the wall and this, these are our. What we would hope for, I just wondering why it would need to go through all the, the same. Basically, the same steps as implementing a new ordinance, like the readings and all that, so.
Cause I'm not gonna put it on the wall, it was council.
Approves it, okay, that makes sense. So if there's something, I just wanted to ask one more question is, um. Is how would we ensure that everybody becomes familiar with this resolution at every committee meeting? Cause new people are coming all the time.
Well. A- as you said, some of these things are. Covered in code of conduct, some of these things are also covered in the resolutions for each committee, there, there's conduct section in. Most of the resolutions and. That there, there's more tea for that resolution, because, uh, people can pick out of a committee, if the majority of the committee. Makes every commission to council, if they haven't followed the code of conduct or had followed the conduct. Sentence in the resolution that developed the committee. This one doesn't have any teeth, it's just aspirational, we're gonna sort of for the last five minutes, it's aspiration. This is how. Will they, let's hope that. We do discuss personal issues and. Sure, everyone won't be cordial all the time, but it, it, it would be kind of. Be a tool for the committee chairs, and hey, remember, we are just, we are debating the issues. Now to people.
Okay.
As for our aspirational.
Guideline.
That's the idea.
Thank you, Jane.
That was a roundabout way of. Back to your question, I would make sure every committee, uh, has something.
Thank you. So we have a, uh, motion on the table, is anyone else wanting to discuss before we go to vote? Okay, Jackie, could you call for the vote?
Counselor Burr.
Nay.
Counselor Kenyon.
Nay.
Counselor Hollit.
Nay.
Counselor Charman.
Aye.
Counselor Bjarnson.
Nay.
Counselor Coker.
Aye.
Um.
Two ayes and four nays.
Thank you, Jackie, and a point of privilege real quick, Colleen, could you find out? Uh, where that extra noise is coming from and weirdo?
It was my dog, sorry.
Oh, okay.
He was barking at the TV.
Okay. Anyway, so it sounds like motion failed with four nays and two ayes. So the next item of business is. Department staff. And committee reports. Um.
Requested sixteen point one on the table.
I just want to say one thing before we moved on, that somebody said something about putting a poster on the wall, you know, I mean. That'd be a great thing to put our code of conduct on a poster on the wall in the room, too, I mean, that's really what. It's getting at, and it used to be in our prior meeting room, it was when you walked in the door, I haven't seen it. Just a, just a thought.
Um, that's true, thank you for pointing that out. So, um, to mention that what James just started to say is item sixteen point one, the finance report is gonna be tabled. For our next meeting, and that is due to a computer. Problem that didn't, uh, allow her to get the reports. To print or to. Oh. Software. Okay, so that item is tabled to the next meeting. The next item is the sixteen point two, the police report is.
Well, we will see a supplemental soon, too.
Um. Yes, we were talking about that, and I'm gonna leave my, where are you?
Just curious. Uh, do you have an estimated timeline? This ballpark.
I was hoping to have it by the end of this week, actually.
Oh, okay.
But it's not happening because my ticket is the end with the system last Saturday. Um, so.
On the supplemental. Excellent. Okay. Um, so moving into the police report, Chief Kevin Martin, is he online?
No, he's on, uh, vacation.
Oh. You, you wanna give it? Michael, would you like to give us an update?
Um, everyone should have the monthly report that we hand out, and I'm just here if anybody has any questions.
Excellent, does anyone have any questions? Uh, well, just for the benefit of the community, I will, um, quickly run over this, it sounds like in. October, there were eighteen total case reports, two hundred and fifty-three incident reports. Six arrests. And two violations of ordinance eight-seventy-three. A police officer hold, I assume that means, um. Okay, mental health, uh, one. And broke, and then they go on to break that down for between Oak Ridge, Westford and Lowell, so I, I won't read all of that, but, um. At the bottom, it has court fines, Oak Ridge Municipal Court. Find five thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars, Lowell finds two thousand one hundred and ten. And Lane County Circuit Court find two thousand one hundred and forty-three. Uh, obviously for our community, so. It, oh, and then there's one more, community policing, the Halloween. Scary cell event, I'm assuming that went well. You're right, Michael.
Yep, we had, um, I think I made up about three hundred and fifty little treat bags and. They, between our visitors and staff driving around after the event, we pretty much gave everything away, so. It was a good year. Weather, the weather, you know, held out for us, so that always makes us a little busier. But we had lots of, lots of good, happy kids and families.
Good, so you guys participated in that trunk or treat thing, is that what you did?
No, we, we've always had kind of fall fun night, but once we couldn't use the whack, we started having, you know, something at the P D and. Um. James comes in and decorates the stall up and we've, you know, set up things so people can come in and tour around, take pictures and. Then they just get a goody bag from us. For their.
Cool, so the kids come and visit the jail so they can see where they don't wanna be.
Well, it looks kind of fun, though, so.
Yeah, well, that sounds cool. Thank you, Michael.
Yes, I just want to say thank you to the police, too, I was out with my kids and it was nice seeing the officers patrol. Slowly, cause the streets were packed with kids and it was just nice. Seeing their presence out there till, I mean, all night long, so thank you, I think it was. Officer Bauer. I think he was out that night, and, yeah, I guess I'll vow to, but anyways, thank you, it was, it was awesome.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is Chief Hollit online for the fire report?
I am here, um. For October, um, was our fire prevention month, and, uh, we did. Do some homeschoolers at the fire station, um, I'm not sure how many kids participated, I think there was somewhere around twenty. Uh, and just to thank you to Counselor Hollit for. Uh and just to thank you to Counselor Hollitt for um coordinating that event. And uh we do plan on uh being in the schools. Uh however, uh October is a rough time for the school, so we're planning that later on in the year. Um not a whole lot of things to really go over that you don't see in the report there. Uh we did do uh all the full-time staff and um some of the part-time staff participated in an advanced pediatric life support. Of course, this is normally about a three hundred and fifty dollar per person class and we were able to do it for free. Um Chief uh Chris Hepple from Eugene Springfield came up and I helped. Teach the course and we also had an RN um who was our CPR coordinator. And um Jim Cole all helped teach the class. It went very well. Um I did add in um the mileages on our medic units, just so. Uh our counselors could see how many total miles are on our two. Uh primary units that we use on a daily basis. And it is, you know, becoming a little bit concerning how many miles would you have on those units. Uh we do have some money set aside in a reserve fund, but it's about. Between um a half and a third of what a new ambulance costs. Um we did also uh participate with the trunk or treat event, had a really good time, had lots of kids come through. One important thing to note is that the Westford Fire Chief uh Jim McKee did resign. Uh last month, so I've been trying to attend the Westford Council meetings. And um doing a a fire chief's report for them also and last one I was at, they were very appreciative. Um also, I included in the report that I don't normally include is our response times. I think that's important for um. The county or for the counselors to know that we meet our county requirements. Or um how our response times are and what that is is from the time that we receive the call. Until the time that we arrive on scene, there is a county standard. Anything for inside the city limits of Oak Ridge and Westford. Uh the requirement is less than ten minutes. Uh ninety percent of the time, we meet that standard very well inside the city limits of Oak Ridge. We were a little bit over on senior limits of Westford, but that was because we only had two. Ambulance calls out there and um one of them was the second out call that the ambulances uh coming back from the hospital. And then Hazel Dell is a twenty-minute response time. And we're, we only had one call out in that area, but we're well within the standard. And does anybody have any question?
I actually can think of one question. Um. Why is the response time? I know this isn't us that sets it, but the county has a requirement. Why is it the same? For Westford as it is for Oak Ridge, considering it's, you know, it's further away.
Um. So that anything that is um a denser population area. Like within the city is um they set that requirement. And yes, I've made that argument a few times that it's a little more difficult for us, but um honestly. We can make it it within the ninety percentile. The majority of the time, there's very few times that we haven't made that percentage.
Okay. Does any other counselors have questions for Chief Hollitt? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So the next report is Public Works. Um do we have Robert Christman or well, no, we have Rick Sillstraw though. Would you like to give that report?
Yes, so our Public Works crew for the month of October, we distributed seventeen point eight million gallons of water. Needed six point nine million gallons of wastewater treatment. We had thirty-six. Service orders, thirteen locates. Zero wastewater repairs. For the water side, though, we did have five leaks ranging from the three quarter inch service lines. All the four inch and one resulted in abandoning, abandoning the line and installing into two inch. Other tasks performed were the control valve and pressure regulated valves rebuilt. Uh this is on a five-year schedule. The rest of our facilities, we issued a facelift. And have been open for two weeks since then and hopefully we'll jinx it. Uh still no new graffiti randomly. And as in the time this report, wastewater plant well pump failed, resulting in replacement of motor and pump. As well as a pressure tank, um it's street sweeping, all home maintenance, park maintenance leaves removal underway. Uh did the monthly reading of meters and dealt with legal accounts and performed vehicle equipment maintenance.
Does anyone have questions for Rick? I do have a quick question, if you don't mind. Uh what is the timeline scheduled for um? The industrial park, Kokoni, all the water infrastructure. Thank you, Counselor Hall. Thank you. How long do you anticipate that project, Brandon?
Um. That one's kind of hard to answer and this is something we usually do. Um and we always have things that pop up like water leaks, so if I were to estimate just the hours, we probably have to water my main line, main line breaks and slow that down. Um would have started that sooner. But um it it's actually a good note, slows us down a little, but uh this morning uh. James, Robert, myself, we met with uh Hunter Communications and talked about um installing fiber conduit, uh maybe assist with that. It slowed us down a little because we're waiting on supplies from them. Yeah, last month, if I understand Robert correctly, correct me wrong. Robert told us that last month was the most number of water breaks in a month in city history. So obviously, if there's a water break, they have to stop.
Yep. I wanted to inquire on that too. Water breaks, um like I'm familiar with a couple of times, all at the industrial park. Like something uh a valve or something and under the ground. Spontaneously congested or something, I don't know, but anyway, broke. Are these uh most recent ones? Parts of the lines that, you know, is the cities or are they homes that you're having to respond to?
They're all, they're all, you know, if it's a hole, if it's on the customer side of the meter, about that's the break where, or that's the point where we do not service and they call plumber.
Oh, okay. So it's not even an option for them to have us do it?
Correct.
Okay.
And then uh in regard to sewers, it's actually at sewer main or what we call saddle. Saddle is what connects a private line to the main line. Which sometimes is very confusing for some cities, do it property line. Uh our ordinance has it at the sewer line, so worst-case scenario, you have a clog, let's call plumber, you might have to go all the way up to your side street to meet that name. So. We've had a lot of used um customers over the years, either that. That's the more we've had since.
I've always thought it would be super cool to do some kind of a, like either a video. A a city kind of rundown on this is how the system works and these are, you know, that anybody can have access to or a or a town hall. That was like, hey, everybody can learn the water system. You know, because that's cool. I'll get to you in just a minute, sir. Um. Did any other counselors? Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to give a little clap for Cherry Street. If anyone hasn't seen it, it looks amazing. And I've driven fire trucks, ambulances down that. It is a nightmare whenever we have to go down that road. I've answered angry calls from realtors, insurance companies, you name it over the years, so. I just told my kids the other day, you guys have no idea how nice it is to look at that street for certain people here and. I don't live on that street, but I am so thankful. How smooth it looks. It's amazing, so kudos to all the work you guys have put into that. It's like. It's awesome. And there's another street right next to it that we get on. But yeah.
Plan, but we have to wait for next uh SDA grants.
Good job. Yeah, please make sure our crew knows that, but.
Anything else, counsel? Okay, uh so just to quickly um make a comment to you, sir, that the city council does have two sessions. For public comment and we were just finishing up our business and next item on the agenda is public comment. So um I'm gonna call on him first, cause he did um raise his hand.
Because he was part of Public Works. I was just gonna ask you, how old is the infrastructure? In Oak Ridge and a lot of those are suspected the last. Before you change something up. That was it beyond thirty-five thousand plus or?
That's a range that's kind of, I mean, so you're actually, that type of question is about the same type of asking, what is the age population of the picture? And how long they expected last, so. Well, I can't give definite, the infrastructure is X amount of years old because. We've been putting in the infrastructure ever since Oak Ridge was established, so some of it's gonna be older than others, but so without being the case. I, there is no straightforward answer to that question, unfortunately. Um yeah, we we got a record, but uh what is the days, uh those were fairly burnt down, we've been off all the records. Eighties or nineties, one or two, but yeah, so we did have. Catch up with fires.
I don't think so.
You know, the reason I asked is because uh I was looking for my water lines and one time I think it came out of my house. And from what I understood, that Westford was a separate town. I mean, not Westford, but the Atlanta city is separate, separate city, right?
It used to be.
It used to be.
It wasn't a city, it was county.
Okay, okay, so uh they kept records of when the water lines came hooked to a water lane in the road. But Oak Ridge never kept those records for someone that, you know, you're locked, you go into the guy, they give you a map where your two lines supposed to go. Where your pipeline is supposed to go. Like that, right? When I went back, they give it for another parcel. They said they put it in a box and it locked up downstairs somewhere.
You mean. So this would be a great question offline. But I definitely like that as competition.
Okay, regardless, that was just one of, they did keep records for Oak Ridge side, so. People who don't work are stored by the store, do the pop, the act of making, so.
Some yes, some no, so we can depend on the contractor, the industry homeowner.
Thank you. Did you have any other comments that you wanted to make to the council?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, sir. I should have asked this. Could you please state your name for the record and the name of the city that you currently reside in?
Um, Rix was, you know, a pretty.
Thank you.
Anyways, um it's not paid, I know you guys don't have a lot of money. To pay for anything, but I did notice. The fact was, it's between Rock and something, paid to the big, the next one last year.
Right.
School, not school, but. And then you paid for one between. We brought and.
Berry Street.
And uh.
Berry.
Berry.
Berry's the name last week. Yep.
Well, I live on Elgin.
Oh.
You gotta go down to Jones. And there is one of the street that's parallel to fifty-eight between Rock and the Chevron Station. Those three roads are the worst ones in this town. Like if you're gonna pay something and you're already having to put it up here. Like getting noticed, we're putting together a fund, they have us all to find out how this could uh. Experience as a president, basically.
Thank you for your comment. Um.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll. Well, go ahead.
I see. There is an op- there is an option, you guys call it LID, residents. Together to pay for that. And estimate to. Make something that probably. Which one? Well, we just did Cherry for two fifty and that had, you know, sickness issues um. Yeah, two hundred and two hundred. That's definitely longer than Cherry was by far.
You're talking about between Jones, part of Jones and that, in the Elgin. Two hundred thousand dollars paid by the low screen.
That's a question that is.
Because like in the, they paid the whole part left. They did, but they paid extra, whatever it was. But when they did those two streets. They knew it was coming, so they paid their parts, whatever.
Yeah, uh I'm really sorry to interrupt you again, but um normally, public comment is three minutes. It's reserved for, I know I'm. I'm just letting you know the standard, okay? Normally, it's three minutes and normally it's an opportunity for the public to give us a comment or ask. Question, but it isn't normally something that turns into a conversation in the room. So just to let you know, you are welcome to come to City Hall and or contact any of us. At any time, our phone numbers are posted on the um city website. Their staff on duty at City Hall, Monday through Friday, well, Monday through Thursday. During regular hours that can answer all of the questions without. Sorry, I'm really sorry to say this, but yeah. Just wanted to point that out, but also I also wanna quickly just say. That I was on the council back in twenty fifteen when we created a list of the ten most needed roads to be fixed. And uh whatever that order of of roads was. I know that Elgin and Jones were on it. I don't know where they are on the list. But I do know that we've been pick picking them off over the years. Sometimes it takes us literally three years to save up enough money to do a road, depending on the length of the road. So I'm really sorry that it hasn't been done yet, but I can assure you that the that area is on our list. We know those are terrible roads. Okay? Uh going, moving on into public comment, I saw you had your hand raised. Could you state your name and the city you live in?
Yeah, Keith Robinson. I live in Oak Ridge. Um I just kind of wanted to comment on the Airbnb topic, just as somebody that manages a couple of Airbnbs. I am actually supportive of the local tax on Airbnbs. I think there are uh trade-offs to having the Airbnbs and there is a housing crisis and that needs to be incorporated. Uh there's also funding prices for the for the city and city generates an income. In terms of the taxes, the Airbnb, just to make sure everybody knows, maybe as management. Airbnb deducts the county taxes and all the same taxes that you pay to motel automatically. There's no. Ability for an individual Airbnb host to withhold from that or anything. They don't have an option. You put an Airbnb out there, any taxes for your jurisdiction are taken and managed by Airbnb and they handle. So there's no uh additional taxes that I'm aware of that a motel is paying that Airbnb is not. And and they are, like at least for Airbnb, since they handle it, I don't see it. It's a line item, like I have my rate and then they add eleven percent. And that's common, you know, really anywhere that, you know, Airbnb people go and and so I think. Having that across any short-term models makes sense because, you know, people that are gonna come to Oak Ridge. Are gonna come here anyway and if everybody's on the same par, we're gonna pay the tax. They're not gonna go, oh, I'm gonna stay here. Instead of here, because this place has a six percent, this side says, no, they're not gonna go, oh, they have the six percent tax, I'm not even gonna go to Oak Ridge in general. Because, you know, most municipalities higher than that. In terms of um. Uh. Other things that cities are doing, like there are, it is very common for cities to restrict uh Airbnb conversions. I know Ben does like uh. A bird's eye line of sight, it's like two hundred feet in any direction from you. If there's not one, then you could convert your house. Uh but most cities do do that um based on zoning, so like if you're in a commercial zone. Uh it's less restrictive on on converting than if you're converting. Zone, uh, it's less restrictive on on converting than if you're converting a residentially built property. And I think that makes a lot of sense and if if we are looking at that, I think that that should be something that that should be considered there. Um. But yeah, so that's, that's, that's really all I wanted to add. I'm going to make sure everybody knew. You know, it's tax update by. Oh, and and one question I had is the the seventy percent. That goes towards tourism. That's one of the reasons I think, I mean, the Airbnbs are supporting tourism and I think they should invest in tourism. My question is, how is that uh money dispersed? Is that through the like a committee that determines, you know, where that money goes?
That's our T and P, G R T funds that we talked about earlier.
Okay.
We have committee, the dates and times that we meet are posted on the city web website. Anybody's welcome to attend. Yeah. Is that all for public comment? How about online? Um. Nothing further. I just want to quickly say before we uh ask for adjournment. That I apologize to everyone. I've. Just now noticed that we've gone way over time on our meeting and I did not ask for consensus to do so. So I very much so apologize. This is my very first time. Acting as your chairperson, so. My bad. I'll try better next time. Uh, does anyone make a, want to make a motion to adjourn?
I see.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Oh, oh. Oh, no.